Insha Allah, before, without any further ado, I will pass the mic on to our esteemed guest who are visiting us. We are very honoured to have him and Jazakallah Khair for your time and effort. May Allah ﷻ reward you, Insha Allah. So, without any further ado, I will move on. I will give the mic to our esteemed guest, Insha Allah.
Bismillah Rahmanir Raheem. Alhamdulillah. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil 'Alamin. Wassalatu wa assalamu ala Sayyidil Ashshafil Ambiyayi wal Mursalin. Sayyidina Muhammadu wa ala alihi wa ashabihi ajma'in. Amma ba'ad. Alhamdulillah. It is a great honour and privilege to have been invited by the Masjid. We pray to Allah ﷻ that He accepts all our good deeds. We pray to Allah ﷻ that He rewards all the brothers and sisters who helped organising this event. And we pray to Allah ﷻ that He gives us all Taufeeq to act upon what is going to be said. Amin summa amin. The title or the topic of today's talk has been entitled as Islamic Resolutions for Muslim Families. Now, it is a very generic topic and there are many ways and angles and perspectives in which we can look at this particular topic through. But in essence, in essence, the topic is mainly about how to avoid conflict, how to avoid disagreements, and that if there are conflicts and disagreements, then what are the solutions the Sharia has given us? What are the Sharia, what are the solutions the Quran and the Hadith has given us in order to resolve such conflicts and such disagreements? Now, I'm going to try to make this topic as inclusive as possible. So, I don't want anyone to think that this topic is concentrating on husband and wives and marital problems, that when a husband and wife have issues, how should they go about in resolving those issues? This topic is, as I said, generic and inclusive. So, what I'm going to mention can be applied to different scenarios and to different situations. It could be the case that there may be someone here who's having issues with his children. A child can be having an issue with his father or his mother. There could be sisters who are at the top floor, Mashallah, where they're having issues with their daughters, daughters are having issues with mothers. Forget that for a second, there could be siblings. Brothers aren't speaking to fellow brothers. A sister isn't speaking to her sister. An uncle isn't speaking to the nephew. A niece isn't speaking to her auntie. So, this topic is inclusive and generic. In terms of, Insha Allah, we will try to look at this from all angles and from all perspectives, Insha Allah. Before we go on to that main part, first and foremost, let's understand this point. And that is that having disagreements, having sometimes Iktilaaf, having sometimes disputes, they are all part and parcel of human nature, of human Fitrah. And the best way to make you understand is there is a Hadith which can be found in Sunnah Al Thirmidi. That when Allah ﷻ created Adam alaihis salatu wa salaam. And as mentioned, another Hadith of Sahih Muslim, that Adam alaihis salatu wa salaam was created on the Friday before sunset. But when Allah created Adam alaihis salatu wa salaam, He took the mud and clay from all parts of the earth. So, it wasn't just from one part. He took a lump of clay from here. He took a lump of clay from there. Another lump from there, another lump from there. And He then put it together and fashioned Adam alaihis salatu wa salaam. And the Hadith itself explains the Hikmah or the reason as to why Allah took lumps of clay from all parts of the earth and not from a single part. The reason was to create different types of human beings. And it is because of this reason, we find some who are always sad. You get some people who are always naturally sad. Nothing's happened, they're always sad. Then you get those who are always happy. Even if something bad has happened, they'll always be jolly and happy. Even though something traumatic has happened, they'll always will have a smile on their face. Then you have those who have, who are of different colours, different temperaments, different Fitrah. So, what we can understand is the way we've been created, we have been created differently. Allah says in the Quran, Iktilaafu al-sinatikum wa al-wanikum. He has created us with different colours and different tongues, i.e. different languages. So, we are all different. So, when we are all different, naturally, there are always going to be disagreements. Always going to be disagreements. And there was even disagreements between who? Between the greatest group of people after Rasulullah ﷻ, i.e. the Sahabas and the companions. You just have to open Sahihul Bukhari to find out. Many Sahabas had many differences amongst themselves. The very famous Hadith of Bukhari known as Hadise Qirtwas. And why is it known as Hadise Qirtwas? The Hadith regarding the note. Qirtwas means a note or the Hadith of the parchment. Because what happened was, the Thursday before Rasulullah ﷻ's death, so Rasulullah ﷻ passed away on a Monday. So, the Thursday before Rasulullah ﷻ was on his sickbed. So, he then gave out an instruction that somebody bring me some parchment, a paper, Qirtwas, and a pen. And I want to instruct you some things. I want to give you some final instructions. So, what happened was that the Sahabas then disagreed right in front of Rasulullah ﷻ. Many of the Sahabas were saying that, yes, quickly, bring the paper, bring the parchment, bring the pen. Perhaps Rasulullah ﷻ may be giving us instructions about who will be the next Khalifa. Whereas Umar radhiyallahu ta'ala, he on the other hand said, no, let's not bring the parchment, the paper, or the pen. But rather, we have the Quran and the Sunnah and that is enough. So, there was Iktilaaf, Umar radhiyallahu ta'ala and the rest of the companions. But despite that, the companions, they loved one another. Another great example, the Hadith also of Sahihul Bukhari. This Iktilaaf and difference was between Abdullah bin Mas'ud radhiyallahu ta'ala and Uthman radhiyallahu ta'ala. And the Iktilaaf was regarding Hajj and when you are in the tents of Minah. Do you pray four rakaats for Duhur, Asr, and Ishaa? Or would you pray two rakaats? So, Sayyiduna Uthman radhiyallahu ta'ala, his opinion, even though it's not the opinion of the majority, but his opinion was, you pray four. He had his own reasons, which there's no need for us to get into here. Whereas Abdullah bin Mas'ud radhiyallahu ta'ala, he was of the opinion of two. So, they had Iktilaaf. And we could go on and on. And I could give you countless of examples where Iktilaaf and differences happened. So, what I want to clarify first and foremost is, where there's differences, where someone is disagreeing with another person, doesn't make that other person a bad individual. Because it is within our nature to have Iktilaaf and to have differences. There were even occasions where Umar radhiyallahu ta'ala disagreed with Rasulullah ﷻ. There were occasions where Rasulullah ﷻ said one thing, Umar radhiyallahu ta'ala said another thing. And Allah ﷻ agreed with Umar radhiyallahu ta'ala. And some verses were revealed and they are known by the Mufassineen as Verses Min Muwaffaqati Umar. They were revealed according to the Muwaffaqah, according to the coincidence or coinciding, I should say, with Umar radhiyallahu ta'ala whose wish and desire. Like, one of the verse was about Hijab. So, he wanted the verses of Hijab to be revealed because the Al-Barr and Al-Fajr, the righteous and the Fajr, they would visit the wives of Rasulullah ﷻ. So, Umar radhiyallahu ta'ala said that if there were some instructions about Hijab, then it would have been more better for everyone. So, then Allah ﷻ revealed verses about Hijab, which is mentioned in the Quran. So, point I'm trying to make is that even Umar radhiyallahu ta'ala disagreed with Rasulullah ﷻ. So, can you see that disagreements can happen? Sometimes disagreement is good thing. It's a good thing because when you have a different opinion, it makes you think and wonder and it makes you kind of think about a solution which perhaps you never thought of before. When we look at some of the battles which happened during Rasulullah ﷻ's time, Battle of Uhad comes to mind straight away. Where some of the people, more so the hypocrites, they didn't want to go out of Medina to fight. Why? Because they wanted to be in Medina and if the enemies were to enter, they could easily hide in their houses and run away. But the other companions who wanted martyrdom, they wanted to leave Medina. So, sometimes, there could be one opinion, but then when somebody gives a differing opinion, then it makes you think that, oh, okay, we could do this or there's this option or there's that particular option. So, Khair, point I'm trying to make is that disagreement, Iktilaaf, isn't a bad thing. Now, yes, when we've understood that Iktilaaf and disagreement isn't a bad thing, sometimes disagreements can lead towards a dispute. So, the difference we need to do, one is like, you don't agree with somebody. Like, he prays Salaah differently, you're praying Salaah differently. He has an opinion, you have another opinion. Khair, that's fine. We will tolerate it, we should tolerate it. But then there are situations where sometimes these Iktilaaf and differences, if it's not channeled or controlled or tolerated, it can lead towards a secondary issue, a tertiary issue, and then the next thing you know, it's become an all-out fight and an all-out war. Let's be honest, you know like the disputes which happen within our own community? I haven't been in this community for long to know, but I'm sure there may be some disputes going on. They all start off with little things, don't they? Starts off with something simple. Obviously, there may be some occasions where it started off as something huge. But let's be honest, normal disputes, they start off with Iktilaaf. And then the Iktilaaf goes to the secondary issue, the tertiary Iktilaaf and difference. And then the next thing you know, it's become a proper all-out dispute. So, sometimes when these differences, when it's not understood from that person's perspective, when it's not tolerated, these differences can then lead towards all-out conflict and all-out war. So, what should we do in that situation? As Muslim brothers, Muslim sisters? What should we do in that situation? So, regarding that, there are, Alhamdulillah, many verses of the Quran and many Ahadith which talks about what we should do in that situation. To reconcileiate or to kind of resolve a dispute or a conflict is considered to be one of the greatest good deeds and one of the greatest acts a person can do. It's mentioned in the Hadith of Thirmidi. I'm sure it's a very famous Hadith narrated by Abu Darzah radhiyallahu ta'ala that Rasulullah ﷻ said to the companions. I'm sure many of you have heard this Hadith before. Ala akhbirukum. Shall I not inform you? Ba afzalah min darajat siyam wa salaah wa sadqah. Something which is more virtuous than Salaah, Siyam fasting, and Sadqah charity. Now, we all know the virtues of Salaah. We all know the virtues of fasting. In the month of Ramadan, I'm sure many of you hear many, many Ahadith about the virtues of fasting. We also know the importance of Sadqah and charity. But Rasulullah ﷻ is saying that there is something which is more virtuous and more better than that. Qaluu bala. The companion said, of course, tell us, O Prophet of Allah, what is that thing which is more virtuous than fasting, prayers, and charity? Qal, Rasulullah ﷻ said, Salaahu zatil bain. Reconciliation. Salaahu zatil bain means where there's been dispute, conflicts, then to reconcileiate between people. Because Fa inna fasada zatil bain. Because the opposite of Salaahu zatil bain is fasadu zatil bain, which is like allowing the disputes and the conflicts to go to facade. How can conflicts go to facade? Well, I'm sure many of us have seen within our own communities or in the wider communities, that it starts off with differences, then it goes to conflict, then it goes to killing, it goes to murder, it goes to robbery, it goes to arson, it goes to manslaughter, it goes to kidnapping. So, this is facade. And he says, Fa inna fasada zatil bain, hiya al-halika. Halika means it shaves off your Imaan and your faith. In another Hadith, which can be found in Tabrani, Rasulullah ﷻ has said, Afzalu sadqah. The most virtuous of Sadqah and charity is Islaahu zatil bain. Is to reconcileiate. In another Hadith, which can be found also in Tabrani, narrated by Abi Ayub al-Ansari radhiyallahu ta'ala, Qal, Ala adulluka, that the Prophet of Allah ﷻ said, Ala adulluka, ala sadqatin, yuhibbaha Allahu wa rasooluhu. Shall not inform you of a Sadqah and a charity which Allah and His Messenger ﷻ loves. The answer Rasulullah ﷻ gave was Yuslihu bainan nas. To reconcileiate between the people, Iza tabaghadu wa tfasadu. When there is hatred between one another and facade and corruption between one another. A point you mentioned, not really linked with the topic, but the last two Hadiths we, I mentioned or I quoted, Sadqah word was used, yep. Ala adulluka ala sadqah. Afzalu sadqah. What does Sadqah mean? Sadqah means charity. Now, charity brothers and sisters isn't just referring to giving money. Sometimes, we may not have the opportunity to give money. But remember, brothers and sisters, that giving up your free time, volunteering is also a form of Sadqah and charity. And that's why those who are, especially who do counselling, because I do lots of counselling back in the UK, and most of the counselling I do or reconciliating between husband and wife, husband and wife have separated, then to reconcileiate. Lot of the times, we do it as a Fisabillah effort. Even if we do get paid, some counsellors will get paid. But even then, whatever they get, whatever they charge is actually peanuts or less compared to the amount of work which needs to go behind the scenes to make a marriage work. Now, sometimes when you're reconciliating, like what we do back in Birmingham, is that, you know, we call the husband, we call the wife, then we bring them together in a meeting, then we have another meeting separately, then we bring them back together. So many meetings and these meetings don't last 20 minutes, 30 minutes, goes for hours and hours. And then right at the end, sometimes, it's like a marathon. You have to wait three, four months to constantly have meetings, reminders, and so on, that then they agree to get back together. So, do you know that three, four months of effort, you're not really getting paid much for it? And many do it, Alhamdulillah, Fisabillah. And even those who do get paid, it's, as I said, very less compared to the effort they are making. But look how much time you're giving up. And it is because of this reason Rasulullah ﷻ has described the efforts of those who reconcileiate between warring couples or two brothers who want talking to one another, two sisters who want talking to one another, two family members who want talking to one another as a great act of Sadqah and charity which you have given, which can never be compensated by any monetary form. Because it's like something, money can't pay for that. You can't pay, you know like bringing people together, you can't pay it. There's no monetary value to it. It is even mentioned in the verse of the Quran, what does Allah say? Lo an faqta ma fil ardi, jami'am ma alafta bainakulubihim. Walakinnallah alafa bainah. Can you see the ayat? What does the ayat say? It said that if you were to spend everything on earth to create love, muhabba, reconciliation between two people, whether it's husband or wife or whoever, you could spend everything on earth, you would still not be able to create the love unless Allah ﷻ does it. So, that's why it's considered to be a great act of charity, something which many can't fathom and buy because it takes so much from Allah and so much sincerity and ikhlas for something like that to happen. We all know the importance of Salaah, don't we, brothers and sisters? We all know the importance of praying Salaah on time. We also know the importance of Takbiratul Ula, which means to not miss a rakaat, to be there as a Mudrik and not a Masbuk, a late comer. So, we all know the virtues of Salaah, Salaah on time, Salaah in Jama'ah. But it is mentioned in the Hadith of Sahihul Bukhari that there was one occasion that Rasulullah ﷻ did not turn up for Salaah in Jama'ah. He came late, he came late. Sayyiduna Bilal radhiyallahu ta'ala asked Abu Bakr radhiyallahu ta'ala to lead the prayer, because Prophet of Allah ﷻ not about. Abu Bakr radhiyallahu ta'ala led the prayer. Then afterwards, it was in the first rakaat, they all hear the companions that Rasulullah ﷻ walking in. So, then Abu Bakr radhiyallahu ta'ala, he was so engrossed in his recitation, he didn't realise. So, the men and the women, they started clapping to get Abu Bakr radhiyallahu ta'ala's attention. Then Abu Bakr radhiyallahu ta'ala realised that Prophet of Allah ﷻ was standing behind him. So, Abu Bakr radhiyallahu ta'ala went, stepped back and Rasulullah ﷻ stepped forward and continued leading the prayer. Now, does anybody know why Rasulullah ﷻ was late that day for leading prayers? Why did Abu Bakr radhiyallahu ta'ala start the prayer? So, it's mentioned in the Hadith of Bukhari that the reason why Rasulullah ﷻ was late was he had gone to a tribe called Banu Amar, the Banu Amar bin Auf. Why did he go to this tribe, the Banu Amar bin Auf? He went there because there was a dispute. And Rasulullah ﷻ went, Li Yusliha bainan nas, to reconcileiate between the people. And whilst reconciliating, he took his time and Salaah in Jama'ah was even delayed that Rasulullah ﷻ attended the Jama'ah late. So, even from this Hadith, we could understand that even Rasulullah ﷻ missed a part of the prayer. Why? Because he was dealing with a conflict. That's how important it is, it is to resolve an issue and a conflict as soon as it happens. So, Alhamdulillah, we've looked at quite a few things already, brothers and sisters. Obviously, we don't want to take too much of your time. Let's move on to the main part of today's talk. Won't take too long, Insha Allah. And it is like the answer of today's topic. The Islamic resolutions to avoid conflict, resolutions, I should say, for Muslim families to live together in peace and harmony. Now, before I mention them, just a point to mention from my side. This is just my side. And that is that, because I myself do, I do lots of counselling back in the UK, we deal with lots of marital issues. What I would say is, and it's not marital only, I see, we also deal with inheritance cases as well. I've seen how detrimental and how damaging breakup of relationships are. Not just husband and wife breakup relationship because that's obvious, you know, you then get children who miss their parents, who miss their father, miss their mother. But even between siblings as well. You know, sometimes, children, they'll have big conflicts and disputes about inheritance of their father's estate, especially where there's like a few millions of pounds and someone involved. So, then they don't talk to one another. Then their children don't talk to one another and it gets really kind of like problematic. So, what I want to say to all the brothers and sisters who may be going through some sort of family issues, marital issues, that remember, this world is temporary. This world is temporary. Look, what's the point of, for a few years? And in the words, it's a few years. What's the point for a few years to live a life of having animosity and hatred for your Muslim brother or sister? In particular, your own blood brother, your own blood sister. What's the point? Yes, we're fighting for a few millions of inheritance money. But let's be honest, even if we did get the inheritance money in our 40s or 50s, how long are we gonna enjoy that money for? What, 10 years, 20 years? Let's be honest, in this world, we are more underground than overground. Meaning that we live for 60, 70 years and then we're in the grave. But we are in the grave more than we would live above the ground. So even in this world, our abode isn't our big houses, big mansions, our abode in reality is the grave, isn't it? Because the houses we have on top of the earth, we only live for it for twenty, thirty years. But our abode underneath, we are there longer than the number of years we live on top of the earth. So Insha'Allah, what I would want to say first and foremost, if I'll go on to the resolution parts is that do think and ponder that is there any point to fight with your brother, your parents, your sisters on land issues, on inheritance issues? If they, if you feel they are doing زُلْم and they're not giving you your Haq? Then what does Rasulullah ﷺ told us in the hadith of Bukhari? He mentioned before the end of time, the hadith of Bukhari, he mentioned end of time, you'll get Umaran leaders. He mentioned this hadith, didn't he? Umaran leaders, they will ask you for their right, but they never give you your right. So we could apply this hadith in lots of cases. Could be like a husband here may think to himself, I give my rights to, so I give my wife her rights, but she never gives my rights and vice versa. A father may say that I give everything to my children, but my children doesn't do anything back to me. So for those situations, we don't need to cause any disputes or إختلاف. What Rasulullah ﷺ told us that during that time where this happens of one-sided arrangements, one-sided agreements is that you fulfil your Haq, what you have to do as a husband, what you have to do as a father, sisters are upstairs, what you have to do as a mother, what you have to do as a daughter, you do what you need to do. And the Haq which you are not getting, then you ask Allah ﷻ for that. That's the hadith of Bukhari. So going back to the main topic is what are the Insha'Allah solutions very quickly? One way of dealing with family disputes, one solution is to create a win-win situation. To create a decision or to give out a decision, to pass a judgment where both parties are right. Both parties feel that they have done something good and they have done something correct. The best example we can give, there's many examples, but the best one which I'm sure many of you are aware of is the incident which happened five years before Rasulullah ﷺ's propheta which I'm sure many of you have come across this story in the Sira. What happened? Very briefly, the مُشْرِكِينَ the pagans, they wanted to rebuild the Kaaba. And they made a condition, a شرط, that we are only going to use Halal money, lawful money, lawful income to build the Kaaba. But they didn't have enough funds. So do you know the Hatim area you see? That's actually part of the Kaaba, isn't it? But they didn't have enough funds to build around it, so just left it half-built, half-all paved. Anyway, خير, what happened next was there was then إختلاف between, a dispute I should say, between the tribal leaders regarding who will have the honour of placing the black stone in its rightful place. They were all disagree. The disagreement led to a conflict. Each of the tribes got their sword out and they wanted to kill one another and whoever wins, they will be able to place the black stone in the rightful place. At that moment Rasulullah ﷺ walks into the Kaaba. And they make Rasulullah ﷺ the حكم, حكم means a judge. And Rasulullah ﷺ said, okay, this is what you do. Bring a sheet of cloth, like this black cloth we have, this size. Place the black stone on the cloth. And then each of the four tribal leaders, you pick up each of the four edges and lift it. So they lifted it near to the Hajri Aswad black stone place and Rasulullah ﷺ then picked up the stone himself and then placed it in. So that's one example where when it comes to resolving an issue try to make a situation where you make both parties feel that they're happy or they've won. Like it's what we call like, you do something where you could say to one party, oh, look, you've got this. And you could say to the other party, okay, you've done that. So it's like sometimes disputes happen, like there was one marital issue I was dealing with just before I travelled to the US where husband and wife divorce happened, they were disagreeing about the dowry. Husband was saying this, wife was saying that, I owe him nothing, she owes, wallaham. Long story short. So what I said to them is, okay, this is what you do. You, the husband was owed some money, so I said to the husband, okay, you take this much. And the wife who was like claiming so many other things and the husband was claiming against her, I said to the wife, look, you just pay this much and the other claims, you don't have to pay for it. And the husband who was demanding all this, I said to him, look, you just take this and the others just forget about it. So in a way, both parties agreed. Husband was happy that at least he got something, he got a large sum of money. Obviously, he wanted more, but he got a decent amount. And the wife who could have ended up paying this much, she then had to pay a lower amount. So in a way, both were happy, it was a good solution for both. Husband got something and then he walked away, well, ex-husband I should say, he walked away. And the wife who was, you know, was, was supposed to pay this much amount, still had to pay, but it was less than what she would have paid if he had gone to a court case, if he had gone any further. So they were both happy and they went. So sometimes you need to make both parties feel that they've won the case, but in reality they haven't, you just come to a, a resolution in the middle. So that's one Insha'Allah. Number two, a second way to kind of, a second thing to mention about this topic is compromise. When it comes to resolutions, compromising is very, very important. Compromise. Compromise means you give up something. And yes, believe me, at that particular moment or that particular time, when you compromise and you gave up something it may have felt very painful. But Allah ﷻ will give you something better in return. There's even a hadith which can be found in Musta de Ahmed. Musta de Ahmed narrated by Abu Qatada رضي الله تعالى عن that Rasulullah ﷺ has said إنك لن تدع شيئا لله That you do not leave out anything for Allah. إلا except بَدَّلَقَ اللَّهُ بهِ مَا هو خَيْرٌ لك منه Except Allah will give you something more better than that. In other words, you leave out something. This is what happens when it comes to disputes. So you give something up, you compromise, say, okay, do you know what, forget it. I won't take it then. Even though you know you're on the Haq, but you're giving it up. So do you know what you give up? The hadith of Musta de Ahmed mentions Allah will give you something more, better instead. And you need to look through the Sira to understand this. Because what happened during the treaty of Hudaybiya, brothers and sisters, what happened? When you look at the treaty of Hudaybiya, it was what they call lopsided, meaning it was all favouring the pagans, wasn't it? What was the condition such as, oh, if anyone leaves Medina and comes to Baka, they don't have to return back to Medina. But if anyone leaves Makkah and goes to Medina, they have to be returned back. What the condition was there? You can't perform Umarah this year, you need to come next year. So there was lots of one-sided agreement in the treaty of Hudaybiya. Umar (رضي الله عنه) was very upset. He kept on saying أَلَسْنَا عَلَى الْهَقْ Aren't we not on the Haq and they are on the Baatil, they are on the false, why are we compromising so much? But Subhanallah, the hadith rings true in this treaty. Because even though Rasulullah ﷺ gave up so much of the, the treaty, it was a very favourable treaty, more benefiting the مُشْرِكِينَ but what happened was Allah ﷻ gave something more, better for Rasulullah ﷺ and for the Muslims. Because what then happened was, within two years, this treaty had broken because they, مُشْرِكِينَ did not abide by it. Some of the terms themselves, they kind of cancelled it. I don't, I don't have time to go into detail, the Abu Jandal story. And then this treaty of Hudaybiya paved the way for the non-Muslims, the pagans to visit Medina Munawwarah for business. So when they came, they liked Islam, they wanted to convert. And then that led to the conquest of Makkah in Aitijri. So what I'm trying to explain is that sometimes, you know, when you give up something, you compromise? What does Allah say? وَمَن يَتَقِ اللَّهُ يَجْعَلَهُ مَخْرَجًا Whoever fears Allah, Allah ﷻ will always find for him a solution. And I always give this advice to like perhaps, sorry, couples where sometimes when a divorce happens and they kind of like have to compromise, you know, sometimes a dowry, sometimes other payments, X, Y, Z, without going into too much detail. So do you know like, because they had a dispute, no one wants to compromise, do they? Husband wants, no, no, I want all of it. Wife says, no, I want this. But you know what, when you act upon the Deen, you are tolerant, you show تَقْوَى and restraint, then what happens is يَجْعَلَهُ مَخْرَجًا Allah ﷻ will always make a solution for you. And the ones who conned you, conn means deceived you during a dispute and they kind of unfairly went to the courts, made false accusations, allegations and they somehow won the case and made you pay so much money which was untrue. Because they did not fear Allah at that time, rather than يَجْعَلَهُ مَخْرَجًا Allah will make it يَجْعَلَهُ ضَيْكًا In other words, will make their life restricted and what, limited. And again, I've seen this with all my, with my eyes. So always remember that compromise brothers and also at the same time, make sure that when you do and you act properly according to the Deen then you will always be successful. And one final point to remind everyone or to tell everyone about how to resolve these issues is, is very quickly is that just understand that, you know, sometimes when disputes happen, إختلاف happens, problems happen. Just step back one moment and just look at that personal, that, that person I should say. And it could be that sometimes that person's good outweighs kind of their dispute. So don't let that one-off dispute and إختلاف become an issue for you to have hatred or envy against that person. It's very quickly, the hadith of Sahih al-Bukhari once Zainab bin Tejash رضي الله عنه had, Prophet ﷺ's wife long hadith, had a dispute with Sayyid Ayesha. And it's mentioned that Zainab bin Tejash, I said a long hadith, she kind of like said some insulting words at Sayyid Ayesha Danha. And then Ayesha (رضي الله عنها), as mentioned in the hadith of Bukhari, kind of like answered back to the extent that she kind of totally if you want to use a modern day word, like cancelled Zainab bin Tejash (رضي الله عنها). Anyway, the point of the hadith is that prior to that hadith or prior to that incident Sayyid Ayesha Danha, she praises Zainab bin Tejash. Even though they had a dispute, but she's praising her. She's saying that I haven't seen, these are Sayyid Ayesha Danha's words, I haven't seen anyone who is more God fearing than Zainab bin Tejash. I haven't seen anyone who was, who is more charitable than Zainab bin Tejash (رضي الله عنها). I haven't seen anyone who maintained ties au Saluli Rahim than Zainab bin Tejash (رضي الله عنها). So can you see, just because there was a dispute between them, Sayyid Ayesha Danha did not forget about all the good Zainab bin Tejash (رضي الله عنها) was known for before this particular incident. And this should be like one final reminder for us that sometimes when we do have, you know, arguments with fellow brothers, with colleagues at work, family, whatever, whatever, you know, issues happen in the local community. Just think, don't, what I'm trying to explain is that don't assume or don't get this thought that this incident is the person. No, think about all the good he has done. Yeah, like if an issue was happening in the masjid for argument sake, don't underpin that person because of that incident, say, oh, he did this, he's bad. Think about all the good he's done, all the acts of charity he has done, all the namazis he has prayed, all the other good things he has done. Remember that. Because at the end of the day, as I said right at the beginning of today's talk, we have been created differently and there's always gonna be moments in life where there's gonna be a dispute, a bit of anger shown, we could just raise our voices. It happens, it happens to everyone. But don't then use that isolated incident to give or taint a picture or paint a picture, I should say that this person is always angry when he just became angry once in his life. Remember all the good he has done, remember all the pious acts he has done, the charitable acts he has done. And that's what you should remember people for. Never remember people for their isolated one-off anger moments or dispute moments. How do you know, they may have done Toba and repented and they may have become, you know, pious in the eyes of Allah because they repented. And you who are constantly thinking bad of them and backbiting about them and you are doing other things, you are then becoming worse than that person. Because he's done Toba, you haven't, have you? So these are Insha'Allah, few things to Insha'Allah remind everyone, I think the Hadan is about to start Insha'Allah, so we leave it at this particular point. جزاك اللَّه خير Insha'Allah to all the brothers for staying back, all the sisters at the top Insha'Allah may Allah ﷻ reward. All the brothers, all the sisters Insha'Allah, also the masjid management for arranging this particular programme, our respected Imam Sahib and also the Asrarar family to my right Insha'Allah for arranging this programme. May Allah ﷻ reward every single one of you. جزاك اللَّه خير for listening. سبحان الله وبحمدله أَشَدُّوا لاَ إِدَاها إِلاَ أَنْتَ أَستَغْفِرُكَ وَأَتُوبُ إِلَيْكَ